All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order for Nevada City Council Reunions Meeting. Can I get roll call?
Luke Spence.
Here.
Emery's not here. Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skaggs.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion by Jason, second by Dane. Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Agenda has been approved. Moving on, approval for the consent agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
And by Dane, second by Steve. Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item five, discussion and appropriate follow-up regarding the Nevada Bark Park. Rhonda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. I just wanted to come in and give a kind of a little bit of a history on the Nevada Bark Park and make sure that you were all informed on what was going on with that. So I'm just kinda, kinda get into it. The Nevada Bark Park or Dog Park, we call it the Bark Park, is part of the Nevada 2040 Vision Plan. So since 2022, there's been an effort in which to find a location for the Bark Park. And several locations have been considered, many with some underlying issues that don't align with an ideal dog park location. Some of those might be in a residential neighborhood, not usually the best place to put a dog park. You wanna make sure it has parking, maybe some trail, water, electricity, plenty of open space for small dogs and large dogs to have their own spaces. And I did bring this up to the Nevada Park Board and Recreation Board, I should say, and we, we came up with the idea of utilizing the northwest corner of Harrington Park as a potential spot for the dog park. Basically, the only negative that we could, could see with that area is, is that the soccer club currently uses that as a full-size soccer field. However, in talking with them, we thought we could re-utilize some space and make a full-size soccer field elsewhere and then maybe configure some other fields and some other spaces, even including the use of Martine Park as, as another area in which the soccer club could use if, if needed. So that's kind of a little bit about the, the Bark Park, but as I think about Harrington Park as a whole, there's something that I kinda wanted to just, just go with instead of just creating a dog park. I think that Harrington Park is a staple park in our community and should be a staple park in our community and continue to be growing and thriving. And that being said, Frisbee Golf out there has grown considerably as well. And, you know, so much so that they're wanting to put in another nine holes. So we've had a lot of requests and a lot of, of, of uses that have come about or potential uses for Harrington Park, that I really do think, you know, with the SRF project complete, that maybe now's the time to come up with a master plan for Harrington Park, what it might look like conceptually, so that way maybe we could find some funding and be able to apply for some grants. Pretty pictures seem to go a long way in grant, grant funding. So I did reach out to WHKS and they had indicated that we, they could do a conceptual. I talked to Derek for around three to $4,000. And Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, that would, we've already done the drone flyover when it's been flooded, and then we also have the non-flooded, so we can kinda see what spaces might be able to be utilized for the different amenities out there. So this would be just a conceptual. I think that we could take this out of our, our, our undesignedated reserves for, for this as a lot of the money that comes in is off the cell phone tower out at Harrington Park. So I feel like that would be a decent place to, to pay for this out of. But I just wanna go into it with a plan and make sure we're not just throwing things in. A lot of people are putting a lot of work into these different amenities and I just wanna make sure that it's right for the community and I think that this would be a good way for us to get started with that. So that's, that's my thoughts, that's my proposal. I don't know if any of you have any, any questions in regards, regards to this at all.
I think it's a good request. I think that park has traditionally been kind of underutilized. I think it's a great space. You know, Rotary Club did a lot of good work with the disc golf course out there and it seems like the community has really responded to that, so I'd love to see some more amenities out there that people could use.
Yep. Disc golf has grown considerably and Matt Davis has had a, a large impact in that as well. So I've been talking with him and they're excited to, to talk about the expansion or potential thereof.
Do you have a timeline goal or idea of when you'd like to?
I think we gotta get the concept first and then I think we can look at what the goals, what the goals of that might, might be and, and a timeline. I think it would obviously be something we'd need to bring back to you folks with having the concept and then being able to, to figure out dollars and how to move forward. And then there's a lot of passionate people that wanna do some fundraising and things of that nature.
Do you think the skate park will be part of that concept and what that looks like? Cause I know there's some people in the community who have expressed interest at times in expanding that or renovating that.
Um, I think we can definitely, can, yeah, I think that could be part of it or at least the area be part of it. I don't think that it would go into the conceptual, but at least have the area for that be as part of the conceptual.
I can say my passion for this has bit me in the butt from time to time, but I know this, some, the dog park is something that the city wants, that residents have asked for for a long time. So I'm excited to see some movement on it. Anything else from council?
All right, thank you.
Next item, the NEDC proposal on my set aside funds. Brenda?
Hey, Pastor Raff, here are a couple of extras if folks in the audience wanna follow along. So I'm not 100% sure what the knowledge of the, the council is and certainly folks in the audience. When we talk about the LMI, I know Jordan has done some communications about this as well, but when you use the tax increment financing tool specifically in the realm of housing, you either need to ensure that you're having a component of LMI within a subdivision and if you're not providing for it there, you need to essentially set it aside for another use in the community. And so that's really why I'm here tonight to, to talk through a few ideas with you all and, and ultimately hopefully get your blessing to be able to proceed with some of these ideas and ultimately move to an agreement between the city and NEDC as it relates to the LMI funds. So the current balance in the fund is a little bit around $400,000. So it's been building for quite some time and will only continue to grow as we bring on a number of new subdivisions here in the community. Today, it's my understanding that the community pulls their, their match for the Story County Housing Trust Fund from those funds every year in order to receive funds from the Story County Housing Trust Fund, regardless if you're doing a program here in Nevada or a program in Ames, those folks need to meet LMI requirements. And so that's an excellent match for some of the uses of those funds. And so really what I'm gonna propose to you tonight are a couple of things that I feel would be a good match for those funds and ultimately the exec board of NEDC is agreed as well to partner with you all on this. So the first one relates to a catalyst application that's been in the works here for a bit. We've started the dialogue with the Economic Development Authority and we've communicated our interest to apply for a $100,000 catalyst grant in next year's cycle. So these require a bit of advanced work and we're working to set the stage with them on that that application will come in after the first of the year. This application would support improvements at the KPPM building located at the corner of Jefferson, Lincoln Highway and at the entrance of Nevada's Main Street. This property includes six units of rental and two storefronts and the proposed improvements will positively impact the rental units as we're looking at windows and facade improvements on the upper story. The landowners agreed to maintain rents at or below $820.80. So let me explain what that is. So there are fair market rental rates that are published every year for Story County and we need to be 80% of the fair market rate for a one-bedroom. So current fair market rate for a one-bedroom is a little over $1,000. And so the property owners have confirmed that their six units fall below that. We'll be requesting $50,000 from your LMI funds that would be used as the state match in the application. Again, a unique request because we could utilize LMI because of the six housing units. We're requesting that you will advance those to the NEDC and we'll hold those in a dedicated CD until we actually need to forward those to the project. This will be matched with $50,000 from the building owner. The pre-application will go in in January, but we're in the process now of needing to request renderings from Main Street Iowa on this building. So that's one project that we'd like to utilize some of the LMI funds for. The second one relates to supporting single-family home construction in the community. So we, NEDC, worked with Keystone Equity to construct three homes on D. And those three homes sold before they even hit the drywall stage and they sold for under $300,000. And so we are proposing that we work with other developers, existing developers within the community as well as continuing to enhance our relationship with Keystone to construct some more homes in this price range of 300,000 or below. And so we would use the funds either to buy down the lot cost or provide down payment assistance for the family. But again, we are working with Dorsey and Whitney to actually get what would be required for documentation to use the city's LMI funds to support this initiative. So I would propose a target, a pilot project targeting 10 new homes. Again, our goal would be, we've talked to a couple of local builders, I think, that would wanna make a shot at trying to construct a home under three. And again, it's meeting a really key area in the community. And again, we just need some guidance from Dorsey and Whitney exactly what we would need to be able to provide for documentation. So again, we would, on the backside, I've kinda put some, some caveats. So it would be more than just saying, builders saying, well, I'll build under 300,000. So we would actually ask for some certification at the time the house went on the market and then ultimately a realtor certification at the time of sale to ensure that both the, the listing price as well as the final sale were under 300,000. Again, the target, trying to drive some more affordable new homes in the community. We would, the NEDC would administer the program and then also would put a five-year deed restriction on the property. So every year that somebody received the benefit and actually in terms of being able to buy a home at a reduced cost, 20% of that grant would be forgiven on the anniversary date. And then if the house is sold in that first five years, they would need to repay a prorated amount back to the city's LMI account. So I've also included the, the LMI limits. And so really the number we use frequently when we're talking about single-family homes would be really that four-person household for a lot of our assumptions. So just shy of 100,000. So again, this is really, really focused in on kinda the moderate income piece of the puzzle. So again, ultimately it would be, the details would be in an ultimate agreement between the city council and NEDC. Again, our, our goal is really to replicate what we experienced. All three of those homes were, again, sold very quickly to people that lived outside of town. So like the opportunity to keep rolling on this to see if we can get some other new homes that might complement what's the higher-end things that are going on. So I take any questions you'd have about generally what we're proposing. And again, we're a long ways probably from getting what the final agreement would look like, but we didn't wanna get too far ahead of the council. So that's my intent. Jordan, have I covered things?
Good. Are you looking for like infill housing? Is that?
Well, you know, in a perfect world, yes. And so we have one of those on the market and it requires quite a bit of fill. And then another one that I guess there's a for-sale-by-owner from. So we don't have a lot of them. And so this is really where I think we'd have to get creative with some of the maybe newer subdivisions to create some more attainable lots. And that's why we might have to also go that direction. We just, there's not many of them left. Now, with that being said, the Trailside subdivision, we continue to work with Burke on, on that building and that parking lot. Our, our, our goal is that we'll be able to create eight more units of housing where we've already got the three. So.
Are these, is this income, does that, people have to be within that income or?
You know, this is the audience that we need to be able to say we're, we're servicing with your LMI funds. So these are just a couple of things. And again, I, there are other things that might make sense. And especially, again, we are going to see as we build out the housing subdivisions, we're gonna see this fund grow substantially because today we do not have any LMI plans in any of the subdivisions that are going up. And so we, today are required to set aside 50% of the TIF proceeds. That's Ames drop, brings up our number of percentages. So we're gonna try to get a little bit closer, maybe based on what our census is, but it's gonna, it's gonna build quickly once we start to roll on some of these other houses, housing subdivisions. So. So again, likely we'd be looking at, especially on owner-occupied housing, we'd be really looking probably at the 80% limit numbers. So that are here in front of you. That's really kind of the numbers you use for new construction. Any other concerns or questions?
Well, I'll just follow up briefly. I'd set it to Jordan, but I'll say it to you too and in the crowd. As a household of four myself, and what I make now, I would not buy a $300,000 house. I don't think I could afford a $300,000 house. So that concerns me that we're targeting at that low of an income. I understand it's usually three times your income.
Yep.
But to me, that's too much house for your income.
So again, that's the top limit, knowing that, that it may make sense to be lower. And ultimately Dorsey and Whitney are gonna direct what we're gonna be able to do and what we're not gonna be able to do because of the LMI funds. But yeah, so it's.
I don't wanna set people up to fail.
You know, I, I think it would do us well not to have 10 $300,000 houses, but if we have a developer that's interested in doing an owner-occupied attached product where a person could buy that, we can likely get quite a bit lower than three, Jason. But it is just trying to.
Getting a, a house under 300,000.
It's, it's tricky. And again, that's where, where we need to come in and try to provide some assistance. But yeah, it's, it's, the LMI is an interesting provision in the Iowa code. And certainly it's frustrating as you look at the many needs and many opportunities we have and that those funds sit there. In, in many places, they, they never get used just because. So I'm challenging both NEDC as well as this organization, the city, to say, let's get creative and try to invest those on behalf of the community and make some good things happen. Like I said, I'm only looking at these as maybe two things. And again, a pilot to evaluate, can we really do it? And then ultimately seizing the opportunity we have with the catalyst on a building in the very key corner of the community. So. Okay, thanks, Mary.
Next item is the public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of safe business other than those listed on the agenda, no action may be taken. Have anybody from public forum?
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Sue Bandicamp, 1233 H Avenue. I was up here about a month ago to talk about and share my concerns over the way some property looks around town. I was encouraged by two other people that knew I had talked a month ago to come again tonight and just bring up the topic again. I know this is public speaking. I'm not gonna get any answers, but I'm wondering whether or not you have had a chance to discuss whether or not you were going to send out letters to people, stick them in with their water bills, let them know what the ordinances say about maintaining lots. We have a lot in town. People aren't mowing their lawns, maybe once or twice a year. It seems like there's some really bad ones. Just keeping their yards picked up. You know, when you buy a house, when you're a property owner, it's your responsibility to keep, keep them looking nice and take care of them. So, and you'll probably hear from me again, but I, I've ridden around town. There's a lot of yards that still need to be taken care of. And so I'm just wondering what the process is gonna be, you know, whether you're going to give notifications or where we go from here. So.
Any follow-up on that, Jordan?
Yeah, first. So I believe I know the two properties we're talking about. One of them has several vehicles in it. There were, all of them but one was properly registered and ran. I talked to that, the individuals about that. The one that was not there and told them it needed to be removed or updated to run and be registered and they've removed it from the property. They do have several vehicles. We've talked to them about an improved parking surface and they, they said they're working on getting gravel down, so it's not sitting in grass, but all the vehicles are registered and run. The city code doesn't limit how many vehicles could be in the lot, so it kind of stops our ability to enforce that at that point. And I don't wanna speak for Ryan, but I, I know he said he was gonna send a letter to the other resident that Sue and I discussed. I'm not sure if it has happened yet, but he said he was going to, so I, I would hope he did. I know generally as Ryan Hunt receives complaints or concerns and as he checks on kind of the repeat offenders, sends a letter stating it needs to be mowed, and if it doesn't get mowed, then he gets with Parson Rec and they, they mow it and then bill the homeowner for it. So. He checks on quite a few properties that are, I would say, the repeat offenders to see if they've done anything and send them letters again. So I, I don't wanna speak for that specific house, but that's the, the system that should be. So.
Chief, you know the timeline from when you first give notice to when Parks and Rec has to mow? Or what's the timeline of how all that works? Is it?
I don't know that. I don't know that data.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I can look into it.
Anyone else? Can I close the public forum? Move on to item eight. The ordinance number 1073, an ordinance amending the Nevada Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 28, Nevada Senior Community Center Board, second reading.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Well, second.
Give it to Sandy.
Okay. Motion by Jason, second by Sandy. Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Moving on to item nine, approved pay request number one for Oak Park Estates Trail from Midstate Solution LLC in the amount of $59,966.16.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by, oh my God, Luke. Any discussion?
Oh, there's one need to be had.
Please vote.
What's his name?
Aye.
I did have a question on that real quick, if we can.
Go ahead.
I, I think it was in your report, Jordan, to talk about the power lines maybe being a problem. Is that gonna affect the cost at all? Do we know? Or are we still figuring out what a solution is?
No. So typically when it comes to moving power lines, we have an agreement with Alliant that they will do that if it's in the way of our project. This happens to be in the easement of the developer of the property owner of that. So the property owner is working with Alliant to get that changed. Yeah.
Thank you.
That was approved. Item 10, approved pay request number three for West Indian Creek, SRF Project A from RW Excavating Solution in the amount of $180,741.56.
Moved to approve. Second.
Motion by Dane, second by Luke. Any, any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Jane, did you have a question?
I had a question on that. Whole third. You know, I buy a nice walkway and everything. They put all the rocks put in. Out of all the grading they've done these last, at least three dead trees sitting right there. Between, between the pathways and whole third, there's like three, two shit trees. Are they braved or down? Have you moved that or? Are they leaving those or plans for them to come down?
Those weren't, those weren't part of the actual project itself. One of them is outside of the project scope. The other two are within, but that wasn't part of it. So we'll have to discuss on when we're going to get those removed. They are, I believe they're ash trees, so we'll need to get those removed.
That was approved. Item 11, discussion and appropriate follow-up regarding Upton Tree Clinic.
I'd ask, could this be brought to us? I, I feel like it needs closure, primarily one way or the other. Jordan, I ask, I think I, I think I asked you to ask a construct.
Yep, you did.
For your questions.
Yep, you, yeah, and they.
You're responsible.
Yeah, they said that they weren't going to be able to make.
Yeah, they said that they weren't going to be able to make it.
So. Anybody else have anything to say about?
What are we looking for here? One way or the other, I guess, as to the city's responsibility or?
Closure in general, whatever that ends up being. Whether we decide we wanna pay him the amount, if we decide we don't wanna pay him the amount. Just to kind of give it.
It sounds like all the insurance companies have denied it.
Which is.
Not a surprise. And I don't. It's, it would be irresponsible for the city to pay that. At this point, based on. The advice that we've been given, so I, I don't know that we. Take any action.
Andy, you had a card for this?
Is it still against city ordinance to plant trees in the right of way?
Uh, no, it is not.
Had that been changed?
That has been changed. They they can plant certain trees in the right of way. Uh they have to be specific, there is a list. And then they reach out to uh Country Landscapes and they will help, help guide that.
When was that changed?
Um, two years ago, I believe.
Okay. I read the paperwork and I've talked to the city employees on it. I know it keeps getting kicked back as an act of God, but I didn't see God with a chainsaw out there cutting the. The root, um. City employees that I've talked to feel that it was probably a result of the project. I I don't know that there's winning this for. For Kim, I don't know if Kim wants to talk about it, but. Uh this. I I know. The act of God is the wind, the storm. The act of God didn't have anything to do with the city project, cutting the root that was out of Tim or out of Kim's control. I think the amount that he's asking for is more than reasonable. I know we're worried about setting a precedent. It's something I've talked to Jordan about before. Few years ago, the Durachio Terry Johnson had some facade blown off of his business and immediately we had a city unloader out there scoop up brick. Hall at West of Town dumping in the ditch that's currently being turned into a a path. That was an act of God and the city participated in it. This was something inflicted on Kim and he's gotten. No help. I. I know nobody wants to take blame. This isn't Kim's fault. He he could have taken action on it if he was notified that it's gonna get cut and damaged. I'd like to see the city. Offer up something to him, whether whether we think it's gonna set a precedent or not, we've. We've seen the city do this before. Kim's been a contributor to the city for a long time, that shouldn't make a difference, but. He's done good work in town for a long time, keep kept his head down. He's produced a couple of contractors in town that do phenomenal work. I mean, he's done everything he's supposed to be a. Citizen of town and not been flattered about it. He's asking twenty-eight hundred dollars for something that happened as a result of a city project. This could have been taken care of quietly. Before, we've done it quietly before, we didn't have to set a precedent. I. Have a feeling I know how this is gonna go, but it's not right.
Thanks, Andy. Anybody else?
Jordan, am I correct that we put trees in the right of way, new trees this past spring?
Or was it? Yeah, we received a Forever Trees grant and put them in. Uh Lincoln Highway and Fawcett Park. Fawcett uh Fawcett Parkway. And then last year, we received another grant and we put them up, up and down Sixth Street. That didn't conflict with uh. Any lines that we had underneath. The trees that we put in are. From what we have been told, don't go two feet. Don't go below two feet, um so they won't affect any lines that are there if there is some.
But they could eventually grow tall enough that they fall and hit. A house, maybe.
Uh, the trees that I believe that were.
Or car or something.
Yeah, I believe the trees that were installed or put in were are trees that are going to be. Sixty, seventy feet tall, maybe ten, fifteen feet, but I would have to check with Country Landscapes on. On those trees, on what which ones they were. Typically, the bigger trees we put in. Um, in our parks and stuff like that, where there isn't any of those issues.
I just struggle with. We were putting trees in the in in yards. I don't think we asked the homeowners of those houses if they wanted trees either, did we?
Uh, we definitely. Put them in. Yeah, we did, actually.
No, we didn't.
We did on Lincoln Highway and we did the faucet. We didn't the previous, the previous year, we did not correct.
Yeah, not. Did not ask, we didn't get notification until they were going.
It's just tough for me to. See us putting trees in the right of way and then one falls. Seventy years from now causes damage, we aren't gonna do anything. And and then I kind of echo what Andy said, I don't think God. Cut the root. And I I. Think I can speak for most people that. None of us can say for certain what caused the tree to fall, but we can all say we have a pretty good guess of why the tree fell. It's it's a matter of not being able to. Say with certainty or prove. But. It seems pretty obvious that this project. Very strongly contributed the tree coming down. There's been plenty of windstorms much stronger than the one that that tree came down. In which I know is.
I don't think we're qualified to make that judgment, Luke, that. People that are qualified to make that are telling us that. It's not the city's responsibility.
Right, but we have pictures that shows the root cut. And. That's not an act of God, which is the reason.
The city didn't go over there, push the tree down, I mean.
But aren't we responsible for the work that they're doing when it's building a road or something like that?
I don't think we can make that connection.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Well. You know. Qualified or not. Whatever your qualifications are. He had nothing to do with this.
I'm not.
I don't give a damn about any precedent being set.
Language.
This could have been done quietly, under the table, nobody would know nothing. We've sat here for years and watched ten percent here, thirty percent here overrun, thirty percent here overrun, yes, 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 yes. The correct thing that would have been done was that the contractor would have contacted the engineering company and said, this is what we had to do, what are you gonna do now? They would have called him. And it would have been taken care of right then. He would have took his own liability or refused it. But it should have been done, it didn't get done, and it shouldn't be done from this point on. This is the most do-nothing thing. This is the third or fourth time. This is ridiculous.
Anybody else?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make one more. Question, I guess. Um, Jordan, you spoke, I think it was one or two meetings ago about reaching out to construct to split the cost of this.
No, they said no.
I I know, but you made the offer, right?
I did talk with them about that, yeah.
Is that, that indicates to me that you were willing to. Go forward with that if we had decided that?
That is completely up to the council if they want, if you guys wanna do that.
But that, I I'm just, I'm just asking, but that that tells me that you felt that we. Told them something, or you just, maybe you were speaking on behalf just to see if you could broker a deal, I don't know.
I was trying to broker a deal, yeah.
So do I have a motion regarding this, Mr. Up Finch Tree?
I'll make a motion that we pay. Him up in twenty-eight hundred dollars to compensate for the. Lost this tree in the den.
Motion by Luke to pay twenty-eight hundred for the tree, do I have second?
This has been something I've struggled with back and forth, back and forth. Yes, it does set a precedence. Yes, it will come back to bite us in the ass later. Um regardless of what's been said. Could it have been taken care of under the table? Well, that wouldn't be very transparent enough, so. So. I don't think taking care of it under the table is the right idea either. Um, as far as the Duratio stuff, that was everybody. Had their shovels out that day and were helping everybody. Can't use that, and that's kind of bogus.
I never had the city help me on it.
So. I'm not gonna accept that as something the city can jump in and do, so. Um. I still struggle back and forth though, as far as. Yes, doing the right thing would probably be paying it, but. It will set the precedence, it will come back to bite us, we will be paying other. Piddly. I should say piddly, because it's not piddly, somebody's house. Uh, or somebody's tree. Falling on their house, so. Uh. That's where I struggle.
Jason, can I ask you to make a second so we can have a vote and then settle it and move on? A second does not preclude you from voting one way or the.
Yeah, also, then let it go to move.
Okay. Counsel, please vote.
No.
Who hasn't voted?
Who didn't vote?
Dave. Clicked it, it lit up. No? All right.
Thank you.
And motions fail. Moving on to item twelve. Resolution number nineteen, a resolution approving allocated capacity agreement for wastewater services between state, Nevada, Iowa and Burke Marketing Corporation. Um, I spoke with Jordan just shortly before this. I'd like to make a motion to table this. I'm sorry, I can't make a motion. Can I ask? Motion by Jason.
Second.
Second by Dave.
The reason we're tabling again?
We haven't received a signed. Agreement yet.
Uh, Jason, are we tabling this to the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Dane, you're good with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this?
Have they indicated any timeframe when they might? And this is fine, wonder.
Um. I I I mean, we thought we were gonna have it. At this point, I think the language of the agreement, so if you guys, I would encourage you guys to all read the language of the agreement. I don't expect that. That is going to change. If you think we've got an attorney sign off on the language of the document, the holdup now is the amortization schedule. And um where those dollars fit in, so. Yep, absolutely. So the dollars are are the issue. Um, I think conceptually, we're all on board, um but. Okay, we're waiting for final approval.
So, uh, motion by Jason. Second thing. Dane. Any other discussion? Please vote. Table that, fingers crossed for next month. Moving on to item thirteen, resolution number twenty, resolution approving real property charitable donation agreement between the city in Nevada, Iowa. And West Indian Research Acres LLC.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Jason, second by Dane. Any discussion?
Looking forward to it. It's been great. Great addition to the city.
Please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item fourteen, approved purchase of a snow blade for the wastewater treatment facility.
Move to approve.
Uh, there's three options. For that one. Option one.
Option one's the cheapest.
Option one.
And the recommendations.
So a motion by Sandy for option one, second. By Jason. Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Okay, approved. Item fifteen, approved purchase of V-Blade plow for cemetery.
Option one, second.
Okay, motion by Jason, second by Dane, and Rhonda has something to say.
I don't have anything to say, if you guys are good with it.
All right, any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Item sixteen, approved purchase of mosquito spray.
I better talk about that one. Figure the V-Blade plow, plow would be okay, um. So we are completely out of mosquito spray. We went through quite a bit this summer, but uh the. The drums that we had have lasted quite a number of years, but we are out, so we will not be spraying mosquitoes. Um, the No CMs, as I call them right now, are gonna overtake the mosquitoes anyway, so I think we're we're good. Um. That being said, uh, there. Since we ran out of this um spray or since we got this spray, there's a a new spray, it's called Duet. It is um. What it does, I know too much about mosquitoes and what it does, it's it's a dual action. Formula that agitates the mosquitoes to make them fly, so therefore we get a better kill rate when we go out and we actually do a spray, so. Um, that being said, it is, it is more expensive than the spray that we currently use. Um, however, if we dial back, back the machine, which is all in the correspondence here. Um, it's still gonna be a little bit more expensive, but not double the price as it looks on here. Um. With the twenty percent discount that they're offering us and um for the fifty-five gallon drum purchase, I. I just wanted to bring this to you to see if it's something that you want us to try, to try to get a better kill rate, or if you'd like us to stick with our. What we, what we currently have. And utilize. So.
So how the, how effective was our spraying this year?
My, I thought, I thought it was pretty, pretty okay. I mean, I don't know. I hate mosquitoes.
I do too.
I like a lot, though. Yeah, so, um. I mean, it was very helpful what we did. It made it manageable to stay, to be outside in in a lot of cases, yeah. And we tried to spray mostly before any big events and that we had quite a few right in a row that we wanted to make sure we sprayed for. But I do feel as if during those events, if we wouldn't have sprayed, um, it would have been a a lot worse.
You think this, you let stuff lose. Work the extra money?
Um.
From longevity and.
From what I've, from what I understand, yes, like a lot of places are utilizing this as it does get that agitation in there. And allows more mosquitoes to fly to get a better kill rate.
With that better kill rate, would you in theory be spraying less often then?
Um, that would be the hope, yes, as well. Um, you know, this year was an anomaly as far as things go. I mean, we hadn't sprayed for. I think maybe, maybe more than once in like three or.
Right, yeah.
Or four years even. It has been a long time, so. But. I I do know that a lot of places are going to it, and I think that they've had a lot of success with this particular spray.
Went through all the charts and stuff and it looked like it's. Pretty good compared to what we've been using, so.
Yeah, and from a safety aspect, there's no, there's no change.
We're not killing butterflies. We're not killing butterflies, right?
We are not killing butterflies and we're not killing bees, no, we are not doing that.
Rhonda, every year I get, I have people talk to me about concerns about. Human effect, people, they're outside and the truck comes by, is there any? Cause for concern with that? That you know of?
Um, is there cause for?
Probably driving the truck and they seem fine, both.
Yeah, I mean, is there cause for concern, I mean, I I guess if it was me. That like, if I I always look at things from a standpoint, okay, what if that happened to me or someone in my family, right, that's how I look at it. Um, and let's say I'm just average Joe citizen who doesn't know how to get on the the computer and look up the. SDS sheet and things of that nature, I mean, obviously I would go um, wash it off, get it off of me and then take time. To, to look it up or contact, you know. Um, a medical provider in some way, shape or form to see, but. Honestly, this is, this stuff that we use is extremely safe, and you can look at all of the information in here, you have to read a lot of fine print in there, but. Um, from a safety standpoint, we do send it out in multiple ways and communicate it it out and. Um, I just, I think the best thing that people can be is proactive with it, know that it's coming, that we're going around and spraying and. And just being cognizant of it, and if that does happen to them, I do feel like they they need to do what, what is common sense in in my mind. Um, I don't, I don't think that's a very good answer, but that's just what I think people should do.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll move to approve option one.
Second.
Motion by Jason, second by Luke, any discussion?
I was just saying, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I I get to stay up here for a little bit, alright.
Please vote. Approved. Item seventeen, approved purchase filter replacement for the aquatic center.
So pools are fun.
Mm-hmm.
No, they're not, um, pools are very expensive, and we did have, um. We have four main filter tanks in our, in our aquatic center facility in the pump house, um, and they basically. Uh, do the job of, of making sure that our water is turned over and and is is safe, is safe to swim in. Um, that being said, we did get a s- a stress crack in one of our filters, um. And unfortunately, or fortunately, whichever way you look at it, um, we had a a pool company come in and. We didn't have to to shut down operations this year, but um, we were able to get a. Just, just enough turnover rate by um, manipulating some valves and things of that nature to make sure that we. We maintained our turnover rate, that being said, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that again in in another year, um. So, essentially, uh, what I did was. There's two, basically two, two pool companies that I trust, they're um, Carico Aquatic Resources and Acco. Um, I did, did try to get ahold of Pool Tech to see which is the builder of our pool and did not get a response from them. Um, Carico Aquatics can replace the filter, um, and the media of that, um. That one tank, um, for the, the fifty-one thousand two fifty-five, and I did talk with Joe. And we can actually utilize a piece of equipment we have to suck out the sand that's currently in that, that tank. Um, I, I know that Accos in includes, I'm being trying, being proactive here, I know it includes the sucking out of the sand. I did ask um, Carico what, what the cost if they had to add that on, he said it would be probably another. Two or three thousand dollars, so it's not even close to the, the amount of difference of the bid, um. This is basically one of those things that our pool needs, um, is it of any fault? As to why that, that stress crack happens, um. He said he's only seen it happen twice, and uh, unfortunately, we're one of the. One of the filters that, that, that happened to, um, Nomado is. The name, a brand of our filter tank, and they are no longer in business, so this is a, this is a special made. Uh, tank for our piping and our operations, so, um. This is what we, we've got. And, I don't know what you have for questions, but.
So that can be purchased and installed before next?
Yep, it, they call it good winter work is what the pool, pool people call it.
Nothing they have to order.
It does have to get, that does have to get ordered and get yours.
Forever to get.
Yep.
I'll move to approve option one.
Motion by Luke, second by Dane. Any other discussion? Please vote.
We're all done with filters now, right?
No, well. So. Uh, you gotta read your thing, I guess, first.
Approved. Item eighteen, approved purchase of media and lateral. Uh, replacement for three filters at the aquatic center.
So, along with the, the media and the filters, um, the pool being twenty-five years old. Um, the sand media and the laterals inside of that, those filters have not been replaced in the twenty-five years that I've been here, so. There is a likelihood that, um, those, those laterals and things could fail, um. The reason that we're taking a look at this now is, um. You know, they said they would shoot a price, I actually thought they were gonna put it all together in one, and we were gonna see what it would be, but they split it out, um. If we were to take out the media and. They actually get into the filter tank when they have to put the new laterals in, we could look and see if there's any other stress on any of those other filters, so we could. Look at budgeting for those potential replacement of those, those few, filters in the future, um. Basically, what this is, is a, is an ask of seeing if, if we want to do that, or if we just want to. Hold off, this is not something that we necess- necessarily have to do, but it's something if we would like to see. Um, maybe if there's any stress indicators with inside those. Those filter tanks, this would be the time to kind of do that while they're here and be able to, uh. To get that accomplished, so. Like I said, it's not a necessity, it's just something that we could look at. Doing.
Would this cost more if we do it after the fact? Would it be more than the nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty-three?
I can't answer that question.
Rhonda, if one of these fails during the pool season, does the pool have to shut down then?
We, well, we did in this past season, we have enough to be able to, we could get by, yep. It's all based on flow rates. And turnover rates and things of that nature, so.
It would be nice to spread the cost out, but we don't want a catastrophic failure either.
Right.
That's why, I mean.
If one breaks, you're okay, if two breaks, where are you at?
Kind of like that, yes.
Matter of what, it'll be more expensive if we do it in the future.
Got on that.
I mean, I just look at the difference in cost between Carico's and, and Accos and. To redo that media, and that's a significant difference alone.
Yeah, go ahead and approve option one.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, second by Luke. For option one, any other discussion? Please vote. Approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports, chief.
Hello, so been fielding a lot of questions about parking, so I figured I'd just put it out on public forum. With the parking ordinances that were updated, uh, as far as the city parks, we put some warning. Tags on a couple of vehicles and they've been resolved, and we haven't been having any issues. As far as any unattached trailers parked on the road, we've been taping warning, um. Warning tags to the, either the tongue or by the license plate and try and make contact with the owners, letting them know they need to be moved. Uh, the large majority of those have been moved, we're still working on getting good notification to them. As far as the, the new additions south of the high school, the streets department's been putting signs up, um, I believe. Early last week, already signs were put up, there's a couple areas that I need to work with the streets permit to. Um, see about doing that, they've been trying really hard to not have to put a pole in somebody's yard, there's, it's. It's stressful enough there that we don't want to add a mowing obstacle as well, but um, probably have to do a couple of those. Uh, we've been putting warnings on, uh, making contact with people, um, trying to field some questions, there's, there's some. More signage that I want to put up as far as, like, no parking starts here, ends here, um, but we've been working with that. Uh, throughout last week, we've put a, a lot of warning tags out, um. We were made aware through social media of parking issues on Facebook, uh, um, Friday night for the game. So, we were out there issuing, um, parking citations that were clearly obviously parked in front of the no parking signs. Unfortunately, the officers got called away for an O W Y, so they weren't able to make the entire neighborhood, so, um. The west side. Was notified the east side, officers didn't make contact with. Uh, we were out there again today putting signs up, a fielded a handful of questions or emails throughout the day. Uh, with the idea of notifying people as much as we can, and I wanted to thank Marla, she did a article that we put on. Uh, the city's Facebook, Nevada's Facebook, and it'll be in the R Nevada that comes out in October. If you have any questions about that, I'll answer them, but that's all I had.
I was just gonna say thank you for answering my questions, I've. Been talking to a lot of folks over there lately, and there's been a lot of questions, and I know I've, I've texted you a lot, so thank you.
Marla's?
Just doing my thing.
Rhonda, you've been up here a lot tonight.
Yeah, I think I'm good, we'll just let, let that slide.
Amanda?
I don't have anything else, uh, besides what was in my report, so you have a question.
Just day-to-day operations, we're doing good right now.
Right.
I just wanted to thank Marla's for the articles about the smoke testing, we haven't had any calls of smoke in houses, so. Uh, but I do know that there's a lot of smoke, there's penetration, so they're investigating, but. It seems like the exposure that Marla's has done is really not, that's, uh, explained, that's all about.
Counsel?
Right, I also want to thank you, since I did text you two, I don't want to leave you out of my thanks about the parking thing.
Jason?
We had to follow up, excuse me, Lincoln Highway days. Excuse me. And. But we're gonna have some things that we could do differently down at the fairgrounds and try to work, because downtown is. Boom, it's doing great as far as Lincoln Highway Days is going, um, fairgrounds. Just okay, but it could be better, so we're trying to figure out some ways to make that better.
Dane, Luke?
Um, Pizza Pie Losa committee met, we're. Working on getting things ready for twenty twenty-six, figuring out who the acts are gonna be and what, uh. What everything's gonna look like in the two-day format, so I think it'll be an exciting event, and I look forward to the committee being able to share more of that.
Coffee with the council is October fourth, myself and Mayor Con. I'm excited to see that, uh, Art Commission mural going up on the N E D C or the Main Street building now. At a leadership Nevada meeting, we've had a couple of construction meetings pertaining to the S R F. The project A, which is around the creek by the fairgrounds, that one is essentially finished, they're. Basically moving some dirt around, finishing every- everything up, the elevations. Uh, some more seeding will need to take place, and then for project B, which is right off of Lincoln Highway. Uh, where those trails are, uh, they just have seeding there and they have to move a couple of. Uh, some rocks to smooth everything out, to even everything out, so for the most part, they're pretty much done, they should be finished up. Mostly by the end of this week, except for the seeding side of things, some of it's going to have to take place in November, because that's when the. Seeding date opens up. As, uh, previously mentioned and I'll let Derek touch on this a little bit more, we started the smoke testing today. Um, and we'll be moving forward on that for the next several days. Last week, Chris and I went down to League of Cities, which was in Des Moines this year, so it was nice that it was close to home rather than. Somewhere else, um. Dane touched base on Pizza Pie Losa, so we're working on figuring that out. Had the land discussion, Mayor and I went and talked with the family and kind of made sure everything was good to go to have it on this. This agenda, and we've also had Main Street Board meetings, and then. I will also send the council, the agreement, the Burke agreement, that way you can fully look into that and read it and have questions. Uh, feel free to reach out to me on it. Any questions?
I think Sandy wanted to say, it looked like she was on our attention.
I did raise my hand, I would be there with you tonight except for, uh, an accident with e-bike, so my advice, my report is. Don't do it. A little workshop with high school buddies. In, I did my part, I got, I passed the first test, but the other person didn't and crashed into me, so I ended up with a. Broken ankle that is gonna need surgery later this week, so I would much rather be there. In person with all of you, but hopefully next time.
Get well soon, Sandy.
Here.
Thank you, um, yeah, just quick update, we did start smoke testing today, no, Marla's has been putting the information out there. Um, we currently are doing the trunk line along the, uh, Indian Creek. So we started kind of by West End Avenue there, and we made it to about the treatment plant, um. They're just, uh, north of Highway thirty. We're sitting, we need to finish a little bit more to tomorrow on that before we jump to the next section, which will be more. In where citizens might start seeing smoke, um, just for the heads up there, um, so we'll be. Marla's will be putting out the next message, or maybe she already has. Tonight, okay, so we'll be working, um, kind of north of the north tracks and then out in the Knoll Ridge neighborhood. Um, up on West End Avenue, and then we'll just kind of be working our way through town, um, just as far as like expectations. You know, as we're putting the smoke in, you should see smoke coming out the stacks in your roof, that's what we're looking for, that means things are working. See smoke in your house, it's good to just let us know, so when you come and look, that means something is hooked up wrong, or you didn't pour the water down. The drain, um, and it's just really dry, so, be good to put water in there anyway. Um, we did. We've been popping all the manholes on the trunk line because those are the areas that are most susceptible to having the problems and. Most of the manholes are having problems, so we're seeing a lot of. Of water come in along the creek there. At the manhole locations, probably the, the good sign is we're not seeing smoke come up between the manholes really, so the pipes are in pretty good shape, so. Um. You know, more to come, and when we have our final report, we can start talking about. Where's the best places to start looking at, um, doing repairs and working out kind of a program in that way. Does anybody have any questions? We're glad to see that it didn't really rain over the weekend, and the rain's kind of clearing this week, so we can keep progressing, so.
Thanks, Eric.
Alright, thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn.
Second.
Dane has some, a few people have some.
I wondered if I could make a comment on some previous, because I didn't get a handle of that.
Yeah.
I listened to several of you talk about precedent on some of these issues that we've had here. Um, that's been said a long time ago. Um, my brother has lived in his house for over twenty-five years, and when he first moved in on T Avenue and eleven, it was gravel. They paved that, and when they paved that. Somehow, the engineer allowed them to not get the right connection and duct tape it. Which took several years for it to disintegrate before he ended up with stuff back in his basement, and it took him a while. He was up here, it took him a while to get that reimbursed since it was so long ago. I have friends on Eight Street, when they redid Eight Street, that things weren't hooked up right, and stuff went back into their basement. There was, when they did K Avenue. When they were boring in on the north side, they were boring in. The new water lines. A tree in the next block down, this beautiful twenty-five foot maple tree. They decided was in the way, I come home from work and here's this tree laying out in the middle of the street, they hadn't talked to anybody. Um, the stuff with Kim up and. Other places downtown that have had issues during the, the Main Street re. have, they did. Either we hilled these contractors feet to the fire and make them pay for these issues, or the city really needs to do it, this is our community, and you're here to help with people. And we shouldn't have to cause issues to people's property and say, oh, well, we can't do anything about it. That's just wrong, that is absolutely wrong, so that's my two cents.
Oh, I learned, and I kind of want to speak on the same topic, it's a little different, because I don't want to play like, who blamed or who has to pay. But I've been at a couple meetings, and both times they said, or twice now, at least, they've said that we've asked Construct to come here and talk, or at least listen. And also, we've asked them to compromise, and neither time they've done it, so is, is that something we shouldn't be looking at as a community, saying, okay, let's not use Contract anymore? If they're not gonna be willing to get together with us and, and work with us, you know, I mean, that's all I've got to say.
Unfortunately, that's not really an option with our public bidding laws, so we've got a code section that requires the city to go with the lowest responsible responsive bidder.
That's an issue with them. If there was an issue, you did not have to.
There are some, there are some exceptions, but it is, they are very limited, and we would be testing the case law to do that.
That would be that, would be part of the contract.
Pardon?
Would be part of the contract.
What can be?
And if they're liable, they take care of issues.
Uh, we do have, most of the time that is in the contracts.
And I don't understand why they're not. Affecting for.
Yeah.
So. Anybody else?
We've already moved.
I've already had a motion in a second for adjourn, all in favor?
All right.
Five.
Adjourned.